Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It is Tuesday, July the 6th, 2021. I like to call this meeting in order. The invocation this evening will be given by the Pastor Joe Wilkins of the Resurrection Life Ministries. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity and privilege. Let us pray. Father God in heaven, as we come before you on tonight, we pause to ask your blessings upon the city officials and families who lives were changed as a result of the tragedy which took place in Miami, Florida. Father God, we are forever mindful of your safety and protection, and we give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this city that we call home. Father God, we thank you for your provision and physical welfare of all our residents. I thank you for all the city employees which labor to make South Haven a wonderful place to live. I pray that you will renew their strength and inspire their work and commitment to the mission of our city. I pray for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city clerk, our chief of police and fire department. I ask that your continuous wisdom and blessing be upon them as we give thanks for their guidance, counsel, and leadership. Father God, in closing, I pray for our agenda on tonight, for those that will speak and for those that will listen. For so often, we seek our own welfare without regards for our neighbors. Forgive us and grant us the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of discernment, the openness and willingness to listen, and the courage to act for the good of all our brothers and sisters in this community. And most of all, let our decisions arrive from a heart of love. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again. And now, if you're able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and that takes us to the roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Scott Smith.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse council members Wilkins and Campbell.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to excuse council members Campbell and Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. They are excused. Next, that takes us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. All right. Now, the fun part. We have proclamations this evening honoring four Eagle Scouts from Troop 188. So, if you boys want all, you can kind of come up because we're going to, we have four of you here. Now, of course, I have a little personal interest here because two of those kids are mine, and I've been working with these boys for over a decade now as part of Troop 188. So, we enjoy recognizing our youth, whether it be their accomplishments in the classroom, on the field, on the court, on the slopes, or in the community. So, we're very proud of all of you, so I'm glad you're here. Also, just want to recognize from Troop 188 Pastor Jeffrey Dick of the Congregational Church, I think he was here last time doing our invocation, Bob Linderman, and Mike Nelson for all that they do for scouting. So, here's your future leaders, so I'm glad you're standing up here before us. So, we have four proclamations. I'll read one. I have some help with the others, and we'll start with Mr. Jacob Erickson. So, whereas Jacob Erickson from Boy Scout Troop 188 of South Haven, Michigan, was recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all of the requirements for Eagle Scout, thereby earning the Boy Scouts' highest rank, and whereas scouting for both boys and girls is an integral part of our community, as well as has been a positive influence for many years, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Jacob Erickson built a life-size calendar for the residents of Countryside Nursing Home to see more easily. He also constructed eight squirrel feeders designed like picnic tables that were installed in the courtyard for the residents to enjoy. You guys are choking me up, sorry. And whereas the project is only a small example of his many contributions Jacob has made to the community, and whereas Jacob demonstrated leadership through various academic and athletic programs such as the football team, National Honor Society, and marching, concert, and jazz band, as well as volunteers for the Alvan Humane Society, serving dinners at church, and distributing food for local food pantries, ooh, sorry. And whereas Jacob Erickson plans to attend Michigan Technological University to study biochemistry and molecular biology chemistry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize and congratulate Jacob Eagle Scout for his outstanding accomplishments and express our deepest appreciation for his service to the city of South Haven and the community as a whole. Best luck in your future endeavors. Well done. Yep, go ahead.
I have the honor of Travis Jordan. Whereas Travis Jordan from Boy Scout Troop 188 of South Haven, Michigan, was recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all the requirements for Eagle Scouts, thereby earning the Boy Scouts' highest rank, and whereas scouting for both boys and girls is an integral part of our community, as well as been a positive influence for many years, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Travis Jordan restored the original bell from the first congregational church and brought it back from the former Vineyard Restaurant to its church home. And whereas this project is only a small example of the many contributions that Travis Jordan has made to the community, and whereas Travis Jordan demonstrated leadership through various academic and athletic programs such as football team, wrestling team, track team, as well as mission trips to the Navajo Nation, Arizona, and Puerto Rico. And whereas Travis Jordan plans to attend Cordia University to play football, study sports, and business management. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize and congratulate Travis Jordan Eagle Scout for this outstanding accomplishment and express our deepest appreciation for his service to the city of South Haven and community as a whole. Best of luck in the future with
Whereas Garrett Smith from Boy Scout Troop 188 of South Haven, Michigan, was recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all of the requirements for Eagle Scout, thereby earning him the Boy Scouts' highest rank, and whereas scouting for both boys and girls is an integral part of our community, as well as been a positive influence for many years, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, Garrett Smith restored the original bell from Hope Reform Church and created a display pedestal and a case for it. And whereas this project is only a small example of the many contributions Garrett Smith has made to the community, and whereas Garrett Smith demonstrated leadership through various academic and athletic programs such as a ski team, tennis team, band program, and National Honor Society, and graduated with top honors, and whereas Garrett Smith plans to attend the University of Michigan and study biomedical engineering. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize and congratulate Garrett Smith Eagle Scout for this outstanding accomplishment and express our deepest appreciation for his service to the city of South Haven and community as a whole. Best of luck in your future endeavors.
And I have the honor of doing, reading Harrison's proclamation. Whereas Harrison Smith from Boy Scout Troop 188 of South Haven, Michigan, was recognized by the Boy Scouts of America for successfully completing all of the requirements for Eagle Scout, thereby earning the Boy Scouts' highest rank, and whereas scouting for the boys and girls is an integral part of our community, as well as has been a positive influence for many years, and whereas his Eagle Scout project, Harrison Smith upgraded a set of stairs at the Warner Camp in Grand Junction, including the complete replacement of stairs and the addition of concrete walkways. And whereas this project is only a small example of the many contributions Harrison has made to the community, and whereas Harrison Smith demonstrated leadership through his various academic, athletic programs such as the ski team, baseball, band program, writing center tutor, and National Honor Society, and graduated with top honors. And whereas Harrison Smith plans to attend Grand Valley State University to study pre-medicine. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize and congratulate Harrison Smith Eagle Scout for this outstanding accomplishment and express our deepest appreciation for his service to the city of South Haven and the community as a whole. Best of luck in your future endeavors.
Well done. Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
And here's for Travis, and here's for Jacob.
Yeah.
decade now, so it's kind of like, okay, all good. Okay. We now have an update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Ms. Gail Patterson Gladney. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Some of the news from the county is that we approved the county millage, which totaled 7.3504 mills, and the millages are for the Veterans Relief Conservation District, public transit, public safety, roads, a lot of mills, and then also for the ambulance. There's going to be an upcoming meeting for the ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act Committee, and I'm on that committee with two other commissioners, also the county treasurer, the county administrator, and others will be on that committee. We're just now in the process of deciding how we're going to publicize, how to receive applications from different organizations, but like some of the $14 million. And so, we're going to have a meeting at 10:00 on July 13th, and that's going to be setting up how we're going to go forward, if it's, if we're going to have a Facebook page, how we're going to notify the public. Some counties have used a public notice, and a lot of people said they didn't see that in the paper. So, we want to get the information out. As soon as I find out more about it, then I'll let you know. New covert generating, last Wednesday, there was an announcement that Consumers Energy will be purchasing the facility for $810 million in 2023. So, we'll see if that goes through. Meetings are being planned between representatives of Holtech. That's the company that's in the process of purchasing the Palisades Nuclear Power Generating Plant. There's going to be elected officials, different leaders in the community, and others who will be attending these meetings. One is going to be at BBISD Conference Center, and the other is going to be in the council chambers here, I believe, and that's Thursday, August 5th. So, we'll let you know more information about that and some of the results from that meeting. Are there any questions? No?
I don't think so.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for the update, Gail. Appreciate it. And that takes us to our consent agenda, items A through G.
I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through G.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, this is a roll call.
Arnold.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to new business. City Council, we ask to consider the approval of the following special event applications. We have Special Event 2021-18, the Bark Beque by Alvan Humane Society, be held on Friday, August the 13th, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the Huron Street Pavilion in conjunction with the National Blueberry Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve Special Event 2021-18, the Bark Beque by Alvan Humane Society.
Second. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. I commend them for their cute names. Kate, tell us again.
Well, thank you, Your Honor. This will be a fundraising dinner. This is being, this will be held at the Huron Street Pavilion, and the date and time stated. This is in conjunction with the National Blueberry Festival, and this will be a nice way to fundraise for Alvan, which is a no-kill shelter. This is just one of the many events they like to put on to get funding for that shelter.
Okay, very good. Are there any public questions about this event? Got nothing. Council questions, comments? Because I could, we have a motion. We have a second to approve Special Event 2021-18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. That takes us to Special Event 2021-19, filming of Walk and Talk Interview of Unsolved Mysteries by Inexplicable Picture Productions, Inc., at various locations at Riverfront Park, South Beach, and Dyckman Bridge on July the 10th, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m.
I make a motion to approve Special Event 2021-19, filming of Walking Talk, Walk and Talk Interview for Unsolved Mysteries.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Kate, this is happening in a few days.
That's right. So, this will be occurring at various locations at Riverfront Park, South Beach, and at the Dyckman Bridge. They have been made aware that the, that the bridge goes up in a half an hour and to not impede the boat traffic. They've also been made aware that there's going to be lots of people out at the pavilion, so if they need to get there or set up some tents on the beach, they may be, they are allowed to do so. So, they're just going to be there for a period of time, just doing, doing some interviews with some talent and filming for Unsolved Mysteries.
Very cool. Public questions on this one? Comments? Nothing. Council questions?
Do we know what the mystery is?
Yeah, what's the mystery? Is anybody in here involved in with it? Anybody?
They haven't told us, no.
Okay. Hence, it's a mystery.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got a motion. We've got a second to approve Special Event 2021-19, the filming of the Walk and Talk Interviews. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Film away. Next. City Council, we ask to consider the following actions regarding a commercial rehabilitation abatement application from South Haven Investment Team, LLC. First, we need to hold a public hearing.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second. Motion, second, to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is open. So, Kate, this is our follow-up from last week?
That's correct. So, Tom Rommel was not, is, cannot be here tonight. She, he is on vacation, but he came here last time, as well as myself and Griffin have been pretty well briefed on this. Heart Insurance is looking to do a commercial rehab abatement on this property. They're looking to put in about $75,000 of rehabilitation to the site. They'd like to repair some bathrooms or improve the functionality of the bathrooms, at least one bathroom, and make another one, as well as maybe add some office space and a conference room. So, really increasing the functionality of that site, and so they can add more workers there.
Okay, very good. So, this is a public hearing. So, at this time, if anybody from the public would like to discuss this item, ask questions. Pretty quiet group out there. All right. How about a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is closed. So, now, let's go to the item in question. City Council, we ask to consider a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17, which is a resolution to approve an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for a proposed renovation project at 511 Huron Street, Heart Insurance.
I'll make a motion to consider, to approve the Resolution 2021-17, a resolution to approve an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. We've had public hearing. Any more council questions? No, I'm just, would say it's nice to see these coming in, and just remind people, if you've got questions or got a business, you'd like to know how all these exemptions work, to get ahold of city staff.
Absolutely. This is, this is a business that's in the district. This is what this was made for. This is why we created the district. This is why we would look forward to them being created in the future, and this is one more tool in the toolbox.
Exactly. So, if you've got a business, you've got a question, how you can make it better, please get ahold of us, and we would love to help you figure that out. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. So, get to work. All right. Cruising. Next, City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding board and commission appointments. First, we are going to reappoint Mr. Tom Erdman to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Local Development Authority for a four-year term ending May the 21st, 2025. Why don't we do that one first? I don't see Tom here. Why don't we do that one first? I'll take a motion, a second.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Erdman to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Local Development Authority for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second to appoint Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. He is appointed. Thank you. Next, to appoint Mary Hosley to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and the Local Development Authority for a four-year term ending May the 21, May the 31st, sorry, 2025.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Hosley to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Local Development Authority for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. I know Mary is here. I don't know if you'd like to come up and just introduce yourself. You don't have to. I'm just offering. It's, if you're here, I'm, at least maybe tell us your background. You've got an interesting background. Share it quick, and I'll let you sit down.
Sure. I'm here for a different item, but Mary Hosley, 726 North Shore Drive. I've lived here for over a year, but I've been coming here since the 80s and before that. So, I'm, I've seen progression of the town, and my husband and I are happy to be residents, and I would like to be more involved with the community. I come here with a chemistry bachelor degree from K College and a law degree, and I'm recently retired from corporate law, and I look forward to being an active member of the community.
Very good. Thank you for coming, and thanks for volunteering. Any other questions? Otherwise, we've got a motion. We've got a second to appoint Ms. Mary Hosley to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and Local Development Authority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. You are appointed. Thank you. Next, City Council, we ask to consider a motion to introduce the proposed text amendments to Sections 1404, 1405.3, and 1718 of the City of South Haven, sorry, City of South Haven Zoning Ordinance Regulating Site Plan Review and Environmental Impact Statements. So, I will seek that motion to introduce.
So, I'll make a motion to introduce the proposed text amendments to Section 1404, 1405.3, and 1718 of the City of South Haven Zoning Ordinance Regulating Site Plan Review and Environmental Impact Statements.
Second. Very good. We have a motion. We have a second, and Travis has rushed right up to tell us all about it.
Yep. So, what you've got here in front of you tonight is some, some items that the Planning Commission has been working on the past few months. The Planning Commission this year has decided that there are some items in the master, some, some goals and objectives that the master plan has stated that they want to try to tackle. We've determined that we're going to spend the year working on the sensitive environments, or I'm sorry, the sensitive environments portion of those goals. Within that, there are nine stated goals and objectives under that category. The first two pertain to what you are looking at tonight, which is an amendment to include both regulated and unregulated wetlands into the site plan review process, and also to incorporate by reference Section 1718, which is in the environmental impact statement section into the site plan review process. Currently, that's not listed as, as an item, as a standard item in the site plan review process, although it does spell it out in Section 1718 when, when those are required. And more or less, this is done sort of for ease of use for developers, so that this section is now incorporated under the, the standard site plan review standards. So, this is what you're looking at tonight. Also, just make a note of the fact as well that with regard to when an environmental impact statement is required, the city attorney has recommended that the Planning Commission change the word "may" to "shall," just so that there's no confusion over whether or not that's sort of an arbitrary decision to be made by the Planning Commission. It simply lays out exactly when, when a, a statement shall be submitted, and that statement shall be put together using a, a professional of the developer's choice and at their expense.
Very good. Are there any public questions about this before we go on? Council questions? Some public council questions? Pretty straight ahead. Okay. Then, we have a, oh, did you have a question?
Did you open it with a comment?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. That's fine. Here. Mary Hosley, 726 North Shore Drive. I was at the Planning Commission at, with this, at which this was discussed, and first, I applaud the Planning Commission for taking the recommendation of the city attorney to remove the discretionary aspect of "may" and the requirement aspect of "shall" to have it be required every time. The recommendation I had made at the Planning Commission, there was an amendment where it went, so after the five acres in per, it said, "or larger in area, or contains a structure that, a structure that is 85,000 square feet," that "or" structures was added. The concern that I had raised is that an environmental impact statement... is that an environmental impact statement, environmental impact statement, yeah, is neat, is done so that you can see the impact because of the development on the, the grading on the earth and movement of earth to create the building, and that I thought that requi, having it required only when there was one structure of that size, it didn't take into effect when you have multiple structures, so that the cumulative effect would have the same impact on the land when the cumulative square footage was 85,000 square feet or greater. And my concern is that when it, when it says "a structure" or "structures," there could be ambiguity with regard to, is it all the structures are 85,000 square feet? And the point that I was making was that the cumulative square footage was 85,000 square feet when there's more than one building. And so I believe this is the first reading, so potentially there could be a corrective amendment, or the city attorney could recommend a way to word that to avoid misunderstandings that this, all structures are to be 85,000 square feet or greater, and that the structures, the plural aspect was for cumulative square footage of all structures being erected on the property. And also, it's not just with regard to the effect on the ground, but also water runoff. So when you have cumulative water runoff from multiple roofs that equal the same amount of runoff from one large structure, you're still going to get the impact on the, the ground and, and effect of erosion. Thank you.
Understand, okay. And Travis, that was brought up, that question was posed. Just understand.
Yes, that was, that was brought to the Planning Commission.
Reviewed, okay. And reviewed by attorney and everybody else kind of had a chance to lay eyes on it?
It, it was, it was mentioned at the last meeting prior to the Planning Commission adopting or recommending the, the approved language. And I have to check with the city attorney. My understanding is that a, a minor change to a word or two, just for clarification's sake, I believe can be done by the city council if, if that were the recommendation to be brought back, obviously for a public, or to be brought back for its second reading and formal adoption at the next meeting. But I'd want to check with him to make sure that that doesn't then need to go back to the Planning Commission then, to be reconsidered there before being brought back.
Questions?
Just, I think her point is if you have 10 8,500 square foot buildings, it's the same as one 85,000 square foot building, correct?
Yeah.
That, that theory. And that's not the way it reads now, so should we check with the attorney to see if, I mean, if that was the intent for the 85,000 square feet?
We'll check with the attorney, because reading it, I, I think, I think that it says that a site is five acres or larger, or contains a structure or structures that are 85 square feet or greater in floor area. I can have the city attorney review that to see if that is conjoined.
Or structures, yeah, I guess, kind of sounds clear.
Yeah. So I can have the city attorney review that and see if any, any changes are required prior to us coming back. If, if, if changes are, are recommended by the city attorney, we can modify our approach and see if that's what the council would like to do.
Yeah, okay, makes, the cumin tip makes sense. I'm just, I got it, so, okay. So we could still move this ahead as is and we'll have it reviewed, that kind of, this is a reading, that?
Right, right. At this point, we're just at the introduction.
Introducing, okay.
And our next meeting, provided that there's no changes that would require it to go back to the Planning Commission, our next meeting would be for adoption and public hearing.
Okay, sounds good. Are there any other public questions or comments before we go on? None? Were there any in the council? I think we've, oh, come on up, go ahead, just come on up and state your name and address and...
Hello, my name is Eric Jackson with Inexplicable Pictures, producer, location manager. Just wanted to, how you doing? I had an, an additional request, because I'm trying to stay ahead of the ball here. I'm sure once the director of photography sees it tomorrow, or no, Thursday, when we have our technical scout, there is a, I guess, an observation on Monroe Street, Monroe Avenue.
Yep. What's that? Observation?
Observation deck, where you can get like a really good shot of the light, the lighthouse.
Yeah, there's all that bluff area.
Yeah, but there's like an observation deck where you can put a camera-
Yeah, the Van Buren County overlook, or the Van Buren Street overlook.
Right. Just wanted to request to be able to put a camera there as well.
Yes, we can make that happen.
Just to get a shot, yeah. Just one, that's all.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
All right. Well, good. All right. Counsel questions, comments? If not, we've got a motion, a second to introduce the proposed text amendments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is introduced. Next, we are going to receive an update from our Public Works Director, Mr. William Hunter. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. This will be DPW's update for this meeting, council meeting tonight. Phoenix Street Bike Path Project, staff is working on the design and the bidding documents for the street resurfacing in the bike path. We're expected to receive $144,783 in federal funds for the bike path and another additional $80,000 for the road resurfacing portion. We're still looking at a fall of 2021. Concrete standpipe replacement, we are still working with Baird and Company on, on the financing for this project. Kentucky Lift Station, recently Shosa took this lift station over. We're, we're in the process of upgrading the lift station to meet current safety and operational standards, and we're expected to complete it by the fall of 2021. Still working on covert downship flushing rates. We expect those to be out for, probably for Shosa for approval in the fall of 2021. This is, goes back to, there's three flushers in covert that are flushing on a regular basis, and this is actually required for disinfection byproducts, halocytic acids, trihalomethanes. The distribution system materials inventory, or DSMI, this is, the State of Michigan has amended the Safe Drinking Water Act again. EGO now requires a verification process for the final DSMI, which is required in January of 2025. They are now requiring what they're calling a four-point verification on 551 sites within the city. This will entail actually potholing the, the main out in the road, vectoring down to verify the material, potholing downstream and upstream on the property side or where their curb box is, and then going inside. New substation project, the design is underway. We are in communications with AEP, and we should be getting a price from them probably within the next probably six months, six months on what that additional line or the cost would that be to feed this new substation. Cross connection inspections, that is the new norm. That's something that we're always going to have, and I want to take this opportunity, every, every city council meeting, just to remind you that is the norm. Hydro, HydroCorp works with a contract for Shosa. We have, we're required by the Safe Water Drinking Act to inspect all inspections, all connections onto the potable system, which is residential and commercial. So you're required a site inspection and testing of backflow prevention devices. There is some confusion too, like when they, you might get inspected, but then you might still receive a letter two years later or the next year, because those devices have to be tested annually. This is common though. I get this call a lot, so don't be, don't be afraid to send somebody my way. If they have any questions, feel free to tell them to give, give Bill a call and I'll go over the letter with them. Core City Phase Five, that project is about, I want to say 70 to, 75 to 80% complete, so they're still working on that. We're still looking at a completion of October of 2021. The electronic, the EV vehicle chargers for the Huron parking lot, we met with the contractor for the State of Michigan, and we're waiting for a mobilization date from him. Bear Park, we're hoping to get that fence installed by the fall of this year. We're still in a holding pattern, or we're waiting for the county 911. We met with their contractor at the industrial standpipe and waiting for a mobilization date from them as well. The Drain Commission, Center Street, Drain Commission is proposing to construct a two-stage inlet, let's soften the slope to facilitate the removal of debris from the ravine. During the week, the contractor will be working, the Center Street will be closed, and the contractor will be required to open it back up to traffic on the weekends. Small antenna installation, AT&amp;T. The AT&amp;T actually has a large antenna that's on top of the Blueberry tank. These small antennas, and that hasn't been in front of city council yet, but we're waiting for AT&amp;T. They're proposing small antenna installation on South Beach, North Beach, and then one at Center in Phoenix. AMI project, we have both, the base stations are installed. We're waiting for fiber installation for the backhaul of the data, and once that gets installed and the meters come in, we can start the process of installing those. Ailworth Avenue, non-motorized vehicle. This is, this is a, the total, this will be actually, so we were informed in August of 2019, notified that we received CMAC funding for Ailworth Avenue from Kalamazoo to the Grange. Bike path is to be funded by the CMAC funding. It is administered by MDOT. The total construction cost would be $315,000, in which the city will pay $180,000 and the CMAC will pay $134,783. Previous weekend, well, let me state, June 25th, 8:00 a.m., from June 25th to June 27th, we had, and started approximately at seven, at 12:30 a.m., the Gulf Station, Lift Station discharged raw wastewater intermittently, totaling about 10,000 gallons. The sewer system overflow is directly related to inflow and infiltration from surface water collection system. And then starting in June 20, June 26th at 9:00 p.m. and then ending at June 27th at 12:30, the wastewater treatment pad discharged treatment wastewater to the Black River at roughly about 100,000 gallons. This was due to the clarifier overflowing. This is directly related to surface water infiltration to our sewer system collection system. We were looking at probably 11.9 million coming into that wastewater plant, and it's only rated for 2.1. Staff had everything they could diverted into our, our pond, our equalization pond, so that worked just great. We just couldn't keep up with the infiltration. I'm sorry, it's not infiltration, it's pumping, because it happens so quickly. Infiltration, when you see it on a graph, goes up and you see the increase, but it goes up slow. These are spiking. This is, this is people pumping into the system, and it's just, and it's system-wide. So we have sent letters out and, and actually on the north side, and we're going to have to revisit this and start looking at getting into more houses and inspecting. At this rate, actually, we can't afford to build a plant five or six times that size to handle all that inflow. It just can't happen. I'm here to answer any questions that council may have on anything DPW-related, or whether we just, projects we just listed off.
Talk about getting back into homes. It's been a few years since we really took a run at that. Are you talking smoke testing again and trying to, that route, or, I mean, I know we need to knock on doors and go in and visually inspect to confirm where, where storms running?
It is along the smoke testing, you're right. But smoke testing really is, you have to get inside.
You had to get inside.
There's a lot of things that you can actually do with the plumbing where it wouldn't go out a pipe. It just wouldn't.
Gotcha.
And we have to be very aggressive, I think, with it, because bottom line is we can't just keep discharging. We did a lot of improvement on Dunkley to prevent actually waste from, and I remember the first time we, we finished the equalization pond and we had a heavy rainfall, it worked. And it must have been that, I want to say in 2017, we had a heavy rainfall. It worked exactly like designed, and we, we averted actually a sanitary sewer. And it's been a while since we had one. I want to say it's been at least a little bit before 2017, we had two in a row. Now, this one hit us, and it hit us for a long duration period of time. And I, I got to applaud the wastewater treatment plant crew. They came in that whole night and worked. They were trying to balance, they were trying to fight something impossible, the amount of fluid, the amount of flow coming in, balancing that and trying not for that clarifiers to overflow, but they just, they couldn't do it. And then afterwards, them having to take samples upstream, downstream, constantly monitoring it. I just can't applaud them enough. They, they worked long, long hours and to, the one, the good thing I could say is, thank God we didn't have a power outage.
Right.
That would have just been the icing on top of the cake, so.
Well, we're, we're going into home, not us, but you know, the state's mandated going into homes to check these water connections. This one seems equally as important to me. I mean, we don't want to have these raw sewage discharges, so I mean, is there something else you need from this council to say we want this done?
What are you looking for in a home?
Oh, we're, we're looking for actually, we're looking for sumps that are tied on to, um, to the stacks tied on to the wastewater. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for foundation drains. We're looking for any means that somebody is basically trying to keep their basement dry, but tied on to our sanitary. They need to have another means. We have started, actually, anytime we do a project, we do run actually a stormwater pipe now when we run a sanitary. We, we started that with the North Shore Project, the Monroe Project, as well as the Dunkley Project. So we do run one out to the property line, because we recognize that as a long, a long time ago. But we're going to have to circle back, actually, and I'll bring, be bringing this up in front of Shosa, and we're going to have to come up with some strategic plan. It's, and I think it's going to be an ongoing thing, because let's be frank, I can tell someone to do it, we can cut them off, but a new owner can be in there in two years and recognize a problem and replumb it again. I mean, it's, I think it's a reoccurring thing that we're just going to have to keep doing.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, some homes, I mean, well, I know you guys can have that discussion, but I mean, some homes, it's already done properly, it's, you know what I mean? But there are others, like you said, where it's kind of a unique setup, where you might need to be a little more...
Yeah, they, they wouldn't know. They hire a plumber, they come in and pipe it.
Right. And I've, I've, I've been into homes before, new builds, where I've told them, this is done wrong. Like, no, they didn't know. Like, no, that doesn't go there. So sometimes it's a lack of awareness, but...
It is.
I would agree, if we're still getting that much info, we should get it on the priority list and just start going into homes and looking.
That, that's the most I think I've ever seen. And we did quite, get quite a bit. We got four and a half inches in, in less than the 24-hour period when that first initial rain, which exceeded actually, I think, exceeded a 25-year event. Our systems are only designed for 10 years. Our, so one in 10 years, they're designed to overflow. We received a 25-year event and this just, it maxed out everything. So we were receiving a lot of calls, but just the amount of water coming into the, to the, to the wastewater plant, and then how it spiked and how quickly it got there tells us actually it's just pumping.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks, your staff, for managing it.
You mentioned the, you mentioned the power outage. Isn't tomorrow the day that the second line's supposed to go live?
Yes, it is.
And no delays, no?
No delays.
Okay, good.
And I do have a meeting scheduled with AEP to go over, city council's concerned about the response time and stuff of the last one, so I have a sit-down meeting scheduled with them.
Excellent.
I, I sent a letter to them voicing our concerns with them, and we're going to have an open discussion, see what we can do to resolve this.
That would be outstanding.
Yes.
We have many unhappy businesses, so thank you. Take your, with you.
Yeah, well.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Nope, all right. Thank you, thank you. All right, we are now to the time when citizens in the audience can be heard on items not on the agenda. If you have anything, just come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Mary Hosley, 726 North Shore Drive. I just have a couple of questions from Mr. Hunter's presentation. So the charge towers that are being put up and being considered, being discussed, how will those be paid for? Will people charging be paid, or is that something the city is supplying, so our tax dollars pay it? And then with the discharge, I just know with all the activity that's been going on in Trailside, that I've been helping the neighbors monitor and getting compliance with the Do Care Plan to prevent exposure of humongous dirt piles of contaminated soil, we've noticed a huge amount of water swelling up in the holes that are for the basements of the homes to be built there. And I understand through the rumor mill that there are a lot of water issues in the homes that have been built. And so is part of the site plan PUD approval ensuring that these pumps that go in are not directed to sewage. That should be something that could easily be taken care of at the Planning Commission level. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And then do we want to, go ahead, I can, you can come back to them.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I did have a question for Bill, because this may ston, I'll face you a little bit, but I, I need a clarity, maybe I'm a little off- I, I need a clarity, maybe I'm a little off, but I thought there was no option when it comes to trying to protect your basement. But between your dialogue with Bill makes, makes it sound like there is an option. Help me understand that. That's not my original.
Your, so your, your stormwater has to discharge into a storm sewer or it can't go into the sanitary? That's what we're trying to avoid is.
We don't want to go. All right, so as of right now, my drains, my drainage system brings water into the basement.
Mm-hmm.
And then pumps it out.
Yeah.
But I know of people that have their hookup where the water comes, the drain system takes it away from around the basement, right off to the curb or.
Curb is good. Yep, curb is good. We just don't want to go into the sanitary where the, you know.
Okay.
Toilet stack and everything else going.
Okay. When I first brought this up. We don't want rainwater in the toilet. Because I lost my basement, I, I was told that I couldn't plumb it out to the curb, notch a hole in the curb.
Yeah, that's a whole nother challenge. I don't know if Bill wants to state, talk about that, but.
You can actually, you can discharge, actually, we have nothing that restricts you from discharging to the, to the street. We have several people that do that, they do pop-up valves.
Yeah.
And they'll have it like three or four feet and it just pops up and relieves and then runs into the street, yes. Actually, I would prefer that because then it gets to the collection system. There are a few roads in town that don't have storms, especially in, especially in the area of Elkenburg, Lyon, where it crowns in the middle of the road, there's no storm, but it shoots one way or the other. So people will put pop-up valves, it pops up, hits the curb and goes. And then we've had discussions with the city attorney and there's nothing in the ordinance that says people can't do that and we don't deny anybody from doing that because you have to get your, your water out to some, it does, might create some hazard in the winter months with freezing and stuff, but we realize that a lot of times we'll send salt trucks out to salt those areas a little heavier at those times.
All right. Thanks.
That's good.
One other point, real quickly, the city put out, posted a sign, this may be Kate, in regards to Brownfield or something, I have it on my phone, but it created a negative narrative on social media and I was wondering if the city is going to put something out for clarity or to speak to it because of right now, that posting that's on the Overton site has created a very negative narrative for those that are opposing that project. So I don't know if the city was aware of that, but might need some follow-up or clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. Let's go to city manager comments.
Well, thank you. We did want to get those signs out there. It has been a Brownfield sign, Brownfield site since the city took it over in 2015 and we have not been inviting the public there, we've not been making use of the public, but we thought it'd be a good idea to allay some concerns that people were using the property, so we put those signs out there. But we can put something else out, explain what those signs mean. I, I'll let Bill meet with Mary Hasley off, off camera and kind of talk about those Trailside, but for the EV charging, that would have to be borne by the person using the charging station. I believe it's just a credit card kiosk that they have to put their money in. So that's being borne by the, the electric car charger. As for my comments, I did want to let everyone know, I think we had a good holiday weekend, but I have heard some concerns why we didn't have fireworks, why we didn't have a Fourth of July parade. I just want to let everyone know that even though these are events that are using city property, these are events that are being put on by service organizations. I believe that the Fourth of July parade was put on for many years by Kiwanis and years before that was done by Rotary. I mean, these are clubs that have volunteers who have donated their time, their energy, in many cases their money to put on these events that are for the benefit of everyone. Harbor Fest is an all-volunteer organization. The National Blueberry Festival, I believe, is an all-volunteer organization. I mean, these are just events that have happened over years that people get involved and hopefully if you're wanting to see more things around town, you get involved and you become one of those people because that's how things get done. You become a volunteer and you get involved. I do want to also thank the wastewater treatment department, their crew. They did do a lot of work last, a couple of weeks ago and trying to get that stasis between the 2.19 million gallons a day that we're, the plant is, you know, has capacity for versus the 9 million gallons that was going through at that time. I thought that we did a good job in trying to kind of hold back as much of rainwater that we were getting. So my kudos to them and I do want to just put it on council's radar. We also will be receiving some ARPA funds, the American Recovery Plan Act, and at some point, maybe in August, we can look to your, a workshop and kind of talk about what can the funds be used for and what would the city council like to look at their funding for and kind of look at a workshop for that time.
Very good.
Those are my comments.
Perfect. Any questions? All good stuff? Very good. Thank you very much. Councilperson comments? I'll start to my left.
No comments tonight.
No comments from me.
So I've got an interesting little story to relate. My daughter, who lives on the West Coast, texted me that she had heard an article on NPR which included South Haven. And the story was how South Haven added drones to their water safety toolbox. So I just wanted to thank the Shays and the Abermarle Foundation, which has provided the grant money for that. And that allowed basically for this surprising little national recognition I found out about. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Great, good stuff.
My only comment is I was really pleased to see the crowds and for, over the Fourth. What a difference one year makes from this time last year when everything was closed up. So our restaurants were doing business, the stores, the beach was packed with people. It was wonderful. My only concern is I can't begin to tell you how many people stopped at my home when I was cutting the grass, how many people emailed me and the city's gotten some of them over the fireworks that, that were set off. I know, and I've learned from the chief and from the officer, Fourth of July night, that there's little that can be done because the regulation on non-professional fireworks is so loose now that people can shoot off almost anything. But I got to tell you, a couple of the nights, one night in particular, when I did call the police, it sounded like a bomb gone off and it happened three times and actually shook our house and we were a block away from where it was happening. So here's my suggestion. We can't change the law overnight and we have probably abide by the state law, but I would like to see city staff draft a letter and send it to our state representative saying that the state should go back to the old laws about professional versus non-professional fireworks and have it the way it used to be where people could not shoot them 100-foot up in the air and have so much dynamite that it sounds like a bomb. I think it's not safe and it's not good for the residents. Other than that, one other final point, I can't begin to tell you how nice it was to call the police, have an officer come within minutes and couldn't have been more polite, walk down to the house, talk to the people, even though he knew he couldn't stop them, but at least he voiced the concerns of the community. And then he came back the next day and told me what had happened and walked down the street and talked to three other people in three other homes and got their feedback. And I think a lot of us in this town, that's what we want from our police, to actually come to our homes and talk so we feel we're being heard. So I thought that was really taking a negative and turning into a positive. Thanks.
Great, very good. Yeah, I just would say it was a, yeah, nice weekend, nice to see everybody out and about. As Kate was mentioning, fireworks also has changed through the years. It was, I know Cozy Radio used to do it and then it's kind of fallen on the office of the mayor and city staff to kind of pull that off. So we've talked about possibly if there's a group that wants to help put that together for next year, form a committee, get ahold of myself or city staff, we'd be happy to, you know, obviously we'd like to see him come back, but it does take a little bit of work. So I would like to talk to folks about that. I think the only my comments would be is I know we're working on our, our ability to get out and just, a lot of comments just about just the usual trash over the holiday weekend and just downtown and just keeping stuff picked up. I know we've got staff on that, but it's just, you know, obviously we're, we're aware, we're trying to keep, to keep up with it as best we can and obviously for folks to pick up after themselves is fantastic as well. So that was good. And again, congrats to our Eagle Scouts tonight. Looking forward to see great things out of them. So that will, we're actually going to be ending the regular meeting, that'll, at least our broadcast will end. We're going to be going into a closed session here in a second, if everyone's in agreement. So that will end, we'll then come back after that closed session and officially close the meeting, but that will end the broadcast here in about 30 seconds. So on that note, city council, we ask to consider a motion to go into a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268H and MCL 15.268E to discuss a written attorney-client privileged memorandum and a pending lawsuit in South Haven versus Milbocker &amp; Sons at all, case number 20-6, oh goodness, 69998, my eyes are bad, CK, Van Buren County Circuit Court.
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Um, is that a roll call this? Roll call it? Yeah, roll call.
This is my first one. Reeceer?
Yes.